We're going to call this meeting to order. Any flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play with me. Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow on us each and every day. We truly thank you. Please be with our staff and students during the summer months if they stay safe, have fun, and grow with renewed focus for a better school year than the recent one we just passed through. Be with our city, state, and national leaders with all the decisions they make for all of us. Give them wisdom, compassion, and the knowledge to benefit the people they served in the best possible way. We also ask you to keep our men and women of the armed forces safe and return home to their families as soon as possible. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call, Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Rowland. Mrs. Tree.
President.
Mrs. Imerschek.
Here.
Public comments? No public comments? Superintendent report with potential board discussion.
Okay, a couple of things that I want to discuss with you. As part of our American Relief Plan dollars, our CARES dollars, we have to have an American Relief Plan consultation meeting on two topics. One, our Return to Learn Plan for the 21, 22 school year. And two, our CARES III budget. And we have stakeholders that are required, that are listed by the federal government. And that meeting is going to be June 21st. But I want to give you just a little bit of heads up on our criteria for our Return to Learn Plan because I've got a possible consideration to end our current safety protocols that were board-approved on 9/14. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that. I am going to summarize this because I'm going to go over it in detail next month because the board will have to approve the Return to Learn Plan. And part of our plan is that we are going to be in school five days a week. And that is required because you know that some schools went four days a week and some schools went A-B schedule. And that's what the governor is requiring unless, of course, they're a PONXity Virtual Academy student. This just talks about our learning options. We are going to learn, we are going to offer PCBA but on a much lower scale. We had 608 students enrolled in PCBA at the beginning of the COVID year last year. By the end of the year, we only had 295. We're talking about 125 in PCBA total for next year. And that will be by interview only. And we'll look at the success that they had in PCBA for the previous year because we brought kids back in. If they weren't successful, they returned to the regular classroom. They went on probation. This just talks about what we'll do for academic needs. And we talked to you about some of these. I won't go through these. But we had planned to hire some interventionists at the elementary level to work with our students who had significant learning gaps. At this point, when I talk about staffing, you're going to see that our one full-time interventionist, that we're pulling her back in because that's how short we are of teachers. We are going to add two reading teachers at West Middle School and have reading as a required class for all sixth and seventh graders as of this 10 seconds. We're still short one, but we feel pretty good about it. We'll do credit recovery for our ninth through 12th grade students. We offered summer school this year for K through 12. We offered credit recovery for juniors and seniors. And I heard today that they're completing a lot of coursework. So we'll talk more about that. We also have to have response for EL students, our students who are homeless or in foster care, and our students for disabilities. And basically, we're just going to support our EL learners with their language IEP. Our homelessness or kids in foster care will provide school supplies, fees, and tutoring. And for our students with disabilities, we will use evidence-based instruction based on their IEP. If we have a homeless, a foster, or a migratory student enroll with PCPS, they may enroll with or without records. And typically, that's not the case. So we also have to have as part of our plan response to the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students. And I've talked to you about Maria's Law before when we talked about legislative updates. In the year 2223, we have to have a social and emotional curriculum embedded with, for all of our students, K through 12. And on the consent agenda, we have paths, SEL curriculum for you to consider to approve tonight. And then we've got a phone call with another group called Habitat for our secondary students to focus on SEL. And I will tell you that we have already hired four additional school counselors and 1.4 additional therapists, which will come out of CARES III money. As you know, CARES III money has to have 20% focus on academic student loss. So social-emotional learning will be part of that 20% as well. Brenda, talk to you about the number of dollars that we are going to be receiving. A lot of that will be on infrastructure. What would benefit our students more would be staff. But the teacher shortage crises is real, I'm telling you. So I'll talk to you a little bit more about this. We also have to have response to social, emotional, and mental health for our staff. Our staff suffered a lot this year. And one thing that we're doing out of CARES II would be mindfulness training, cultivating mindfulness presented by Tina Buegrin. And I'll let you look through some of those things. And I'll go over those more in depth next month. Now, unless, let me see if I skipped something here. I don't think I did. There is a law that goes into effect, it's Senate Bill 658, July 1. We cannot have a mask mandate unless our local health department advises that we have a mask mandate or if our governor declares a state of emergency. So I'm listing the daily occurrences. We'll go back to regular lunch scales, the schedules, parents, guests, and visitors, and building. You can read through those, and I'll go through them with you if we do not have a state of emergency ordered by the governor or if the K County Health Department tells us you need to shut things down. Probably before next month, we will come up with some kind of safety protocol of where our risk level will be, where we will start reducing our use of facility or our crowd level, our capacity limits.
Now, would those numbers have to come, it would be based off of what our county is at?
Our county.
It's not based off of what students or parents report?
Correct. But with the ARP, the ARC Plan, if we implement a mask mandate, it has to be on the board agenda every month. And we have to talk about why and allow for public comments. However, our capacity limits and use of facilities, there's no law about that. I will, I'll get into that later. Here's what I want to talk to you about, the masks. This law goes into effect July 1. Only the governor declaring a state of emergency or K County Health Department that says we're at risk is the only way that we can have a mask mandate. However, by federal order, masks are required on all modes of public transportation. And that order goes through September 13th of 2021. So our kids are going to have to wear a mask on the bus. Currently, we have kids in summer school, K through 12. It is not required because we got down to the green level at one point. But I've been at all summer schools and people are still wearing masks.
Are they wearing masks on the buses?
They have to. They have to. Even in a school vehicle. So it would have to be in a school bus or a school vehicle. This just talks about mask accommodations. That's like for the deaf or hard of hearing or if someone's getting direct speech services, they can use a shield. And I'll talk to you more about that next month. We do have, one of the criteria that has to be in our plan is modifying our facilities for social distancing. And as you know, we social-distanced the best we could this past year and will continue for that. We also have to list any facility modifications. And these could include expanding our playground areas because we're going to expand our Washington Pre-K, creating outdoor learning environments and lunch areas, which we already have some that they've done themselves, expansion of cafeterias, expansion of classrooms, restroom remodels, flooring upgrades, and HVAC upgrades. And with the amount of CARES dollars that we're getting, since we can't hire more people, most schools are modifying their infrastructure because it has to match prepare, prevent, respond to COVID. So there's very specific criteria. We have to talk about hand washing and respiratory etiquette. And I'm not going to read through that with you. We have to provide that training to our students. And as you already know, you all approved this last month, the Nano, the Casper machines. And the hand sanitizer is called It's Nanoed. I tried to argue with Brett on that. I'm like, I'm not going to put It's Nanoed. That's the name of the product. It's Nanoed. I thought it was Nanoed. So it kind of works like a liquid bandage that has already been purchased. We will continue to clean and maintain our facilities. Filters are changed regularly. We are going to have the Casper units in every classroom. Those have been ordered and received. And we already are using them at summer school. So those are being rolled out now. Then we have another It's Nanoed Barrier Surface Protection that we'll use like in large areas, classrooms, gyms, those kind of things. We, this is part of the criteria, and I'm not going to read this to you. You know a lot about it. Contact tracing combined with isolation and quarantine, collaborating with state, local, and tribal departments. As you know, our nurses and we have contact tracers trained through Johns Hopkins University do all of our contact tracing. Contact tracing will not go away. If there's still a positive, we still will have to quarantine. Now, I keep hearing that the distance may reduce from six feet to three feet. The CDC has already said that it's safe to be within three feet. But if you quarantine, it's still six feet. So of course, I talked to Amy Wehunt with the K County Health Department regularly. I've missed her a lot this summer. I've talked to her a couple of times, though. Right now, she will go with what the governor says. She won't go with CDC guidelines. The trigger is currently six feet for 15 minutes or longer for quarantine. Now, unless the child or the staff member is fully vaccinated, then you're exempt from quarantine. So I do know that the phases are open for 12- to 18-year-olds in vaccinations. And a lot of our students have had vaccinations. K County Health Department has told me that. And I've talked to quite a few parents. We'll talk to you a little bit more about that. We also had to have how we screen for testing. And you know, White Eagle and K County Health Department will work with us for free COVID screening. Now, if you go to an urgent care, it's no longer free after January 1. So, but the K County Health Department and White Eagle will work with us. You know all about our vaccination efforts. That is required in the Return to Learn Plan. We had our three community partners, K County Health Department, Phillips 66, White Eagle Health Center. I've already been in touch with all three. If we have to have a booster, they will help us. If, they will help us with our new employees as well. Make sure that they're vaccinated. Also, K County Health Department is going to be at registration two evenings. And they will have the required immunizations. They also are going to have Pfizer available for anybody who wants it. Obviously, a parent or guardian would have to be present. So we will be offering that two nights at registration. We are going to set something up in our Power School Student Information System that parents can mark if their students have had the vaccination and they'll have to upload the proof. I mean, a lot of people tell us they have the vaccination, but to get out of quarantine free, you have to have your vaccination card.
It's not required to be enrolled, though?
No.
They need to?
We cannot.
Right. They need to know the difference. Like make sure that?
Yes. Senate Bill 658 also says that. It's about the mask mandate. We cannot mask, we cannot mandate masks nor can we require vaccinations for them to get in school. But we do have to post on our website by July 1 per the same bill that parents either have to have their vaccinations up to date, the required vaccinations, or have an exemption paper on file for religious reasons or whatever reason they choose not to get vaccinated or they can't go to school. Last year, we allowed kids in school that weren't vaccinated because the K County Health Department was closed. I mean, and we had been closed for an entire quarter. And the Health Department was not opening up for another month and a half. So that would have been a long time our kids weren't in school. And our REO worked with us on that. But they're not going to next year. They have to have all vaccinations in place. If we go into intermittent closure, we will go into distance learning just like we did last year. And I won't talk to you about all those things. You all know what we did. If we go into intermittent closure, our students with disabilities do have the opportunity to come in for in-person learning as specified by the IEP team or their IEP contingency plans. And additional items were purchased for students with disabilities, task box, things like that, so they could do the lessons at home. And we did have our students with disabilities that came in when we were on closure. If we go into intermittent closure, we will offer grab-and-go meals just like we're doing throughout the summer, throughout June. And I just mentioned on here that all meals are free through the 21, 22 school year, whether we're in-person learning or distance learning. And Jeff, I talked to Linda one day last week. I think we had a few vacation Bible schools show up for meals, which is great. They don't have to be our kids, 18 or younger, any student. So Jeff says our best days are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for feeding. And those are our summer school days. And chicken day is a big day. It's Wednesday.
I know that's a big thing for the community. That's awesome.
Did we have some daycare centers come and get some meals too?
We had two daycares that come and stuff.
Okay.
And then we have one that, a group that meets in the board.
Okay. This just talks about ways parents can help. And we'll keep driving this home, keep your kids home if they have a 100-degree temperature. Now, I talked to you about quarantining. It's not an option if it's a family member that's been diagnosed. So if it's mom, dad, grandma that lives in the household, the student has to quarantine unless they're vaccinated. So that just talks a little bit about that. So I'll bring that to you. But with that, I say all that to say, here's our Return to Learn Plan that you all approved, 9/14 of 2020. And if you'll notice on the second section, the health protocols on face coverings, the only level that we aren't to have face coverings is the green level. We've made it one time. It's less than 1.43. Two weeks ago, it was 2.1 or 2.3. This last week, it was 2.0. Here's what I can tell you, we have not had any cases. We have not even had any family cases. So I hate to go back and forth with the mask mandate. So an agenda item after this presentation is to consider just ending this plan and then starting with the new one in July, at our July board meeting because the law changes with the governor and the mask mandate. And then we can work out some things on our levels as far as protocols, as far as capacity and use of facilities and limiting public events. And we'll take input from all of our stakeholders. And I do have Daniel Sharon on that committee with White Eagle Health and Amy Wehunt as well. And then the board obviously can have input. But that's required by federal law. And we have to accept public comments for 30 days.
Who's on that, who are considered the stakeholders? Is there any medical professionals on?
Uh huh. Amy Wehunt, Daniel Sharon. And that wasn't required. I added medical professionals. Teachers, their union rep, students, civil rights, homeless kids, EL. You name it, all of our stakeholders. We have quite a few coming. Actually, Nancy is serving on that committee representing our EL population, our English-language learners. So, and then we'll bring it to the board. We'll have to receive public comments for 30 days. What we'll do is we will put the Return to Learn Plan on the website. And, oh, Ryan doesn't know this, have Ryan create an email for public comments. It's easy. He can do that easy enough. I meant to tell you that in Superintendent's Cabinet, but forgot. So that's the next agenda item is just consider ending this. And then we'll have a new plan July 10th. Unless things get out of control, which I'm hoping they don't with COVID. So far, we're staying really, really low.
Yeah, I think our state's doing better than others.
Okay, next I want to talk to you about a staffing report. And this is much to our dismay. We are definitely in a severe teacher shortage. 1,400 more teachers retired in May of 2021. From May of 2020, we knew that would happen because of the historic pay raise and the three-year high for OTRS. So all of us around the state are vying for 1,400 additional more teachers than the ones that typically leave. So we knew that was going to be an issue, and it's tough. If you will look on OSSBA job board, there are hundreds, hundreds of postings. In fact, ours just get buried in there. One of my friends emailed or texted me, asked if we had an extra social studies candidate that might could coach. And I sent her back the big dying laughing emoji. No, we don't have one. So I'm going to talk to you about our unfilled positions and this change today. Right now, we have a third-grade teaching opening at Garfield. Last year, we had only 25 second graders. So it's possible that we could collapse one of our third-grade classes, hire a TA. That's a lot of kids. And you know, we have class-sized goals that the board established. And we may have to go back to higher limits and higher class-sized TAs because it's pretty tough. We do need a fifth-grade teacher at Garfield, and there's no getting around that. The fourth-grade section was huge at Garfield last year. At Liberty, we have to have a first-grade teacher. At Lincoln, we need-
Do you look at that? If the group before, can you drop a teacher down?
Well, we just, those kids will move up. So we just need one teacher in third grade.
Well, from fifth, you said you're going to need a teacher for fifth grade.
Yeah. The fourth-grade class is huge. The fourth-grade class is huge.
I think you're talking about the third to the second, but they didn't have, they only had one second.
We only had one section of second grade last year.
And so they wouldn't be able to move that one? Is that what you were talking about?
Oh, the big group is in the third?
The small group is, was in second last year. We only had one second grade. Katie-
What I'm asking is, why do we need a fifth grade? If you said-
Oh, two, one retired and one left, right?
Right.
Oh, one left?
Yeah. In fact, we didn't have very many staff stay at Garfield. Nothing to do with the principal of the school. It just worked out that way. So it was a complete refurbish. We have to have a first grade at Liberty. They had 40 kindergartners.
I thought maybe you had too many fourth-grade teachers. If the fourth grade was going to fifth grade for next year.
No, we have two fourth grade. And our third-grade class was big. So we'll need two fourth grade and we'll need two fifth grade. But we could collapse that one. There's an option. Katie had asked for two sections. And it's hard just having one section. I'll tell you why. You don't have anybody to PLC with. You can't split kids who are behavior issues. And it's just tough. And you know, it, before the year ended, I said if we're going to have the school open at Garfield, which we are, we need to provide two sections. But I don't think it's going to be possible with this severe teacher shortage. We need a counselor at Lincoln. We do have an offer on the table. We did not hear back from that counselor today. If worse comes to worse, we can move one of our response counselors over there. We don't want to because we need to respond to the social and emotional needs of our students. This is a new one. We had a third-grade teacher resign today. At this point, we are going to move our one full-time interventionist back in. And she knew that when we hired her as interventionist, but she doesn't know it. We've been trying to call her all day. If she moves back in, she wanted to go back to Trout, that's where she came from. This is her chance. So then Union Elementary, we need a fourth-grade teacher. We could collapse that class because there were only 25 in third grade last year. And we only had one section of third grade at Union, so.
Where do we post for job? I remember all the things.
You name it, everywhere.
Just a, yeah, I wondered if anybody, that Speak Now makes the funniest videos and they've gone big. I just wonder if they would be able to do something.
They probably could for $5,000 to $7,000.
They're pretty pricey.
Yeah. No, I would love to do that. And we could do our own videos, too.
Yes, we-
Make a TikTok channel or something. Make it funny. Looking for teachers, I don't know.
Well, and you've probably seen on the news that Oklahoma City Public Schools has invoked a signing bonus for $1,500 for special ed, science, and math teachers. And then Crooked Oak gives $2,500 signing bonus for any teacher.
So are we going to lose ours to them? They're not going to?
No. Well, unless you want to move there. But yeah, if you want a bonus. Okay, so here's where we are. Possibly five teachers. Actually, there's one out there that we could hire. It's grim for elementary. Okay, here we are, June, what's today, the 14th? The magic day that we can hold people's contract is June 22nd. And that's only if they're going to another school in Oklahoma. If they go to Kansas or Arkansas or they retire, they don't need that Oklahoma certificate. So, and we will, we do hold. It's a late date this year because it's 15 days after the first Monday in June. And the first Monday in June was late. So we just hold our breath. And we got this resignation today during Superintendent's Cabinet. And so we just made the decision right then. We've been worried about our one interventionist that we would have to put him back in. But hey, it's at Trout. We'll see, you know, how that goes. So, so we could collapse two, we move an interventionist back in. That leaves us two that we have to have. And we haven't made it to June 22nd. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we don't have any more elementary unfilled. Okay, here's our secondary unfilled. We have a reading position that's unfilled. Now, I told you that we added two reading teachers at West. Those are filled. But one of our reading teachers is now going to be the instructional coach at West. If worse comes to worse, we can move her back into reading teacher. However, we have, we have a bead on a couple reading teachers. Here's a big one, science. We need a science teacher at West Middle School. On the agenda, on the board personnel report, we have Dylan Jackson as dean of students at Poe High. He's a science teacher. So if we can't fill that, we'll have to move him back. And Poe High won't have the dean of students. Okay, here's East. We need a science teacher. Here's Poe High. We need a science teacher. We need an athletic trainer. We can get by if we don't have an athletic trainer. It's not ideal. So let's go back here.
We already have one.
It's not by law? I thought you had to-
No, we do have one.
We have one.
Oh. Yeah, just the next, second one.
So we need three science teachers. In our negotiated agreement, we can invoke the one-time signing bonus, and we may have to. I mean, you can't get science, math, and special ed teachers as it is. And we need three science teachers.
The dean of students a new position or is that?
It was going to be a new, added position.
So you had three resignations in science?
We had six.
In science?
Yes. We filled three. And here's the deal, if we invoke the one-time stipend, which is in the negotiated agreement, and I don't know that it's ever been invoked, I think we have to give it to those three science teachers who have already been hired in June. I mean, they signed with us first. We shouldn't penalize them. So.
Anna, you want to tell her what you suggested to me earlier?
I was, I wasn't thinking about the ones that I'd already signed on. I was thinking about the ones that were already with the district, like that were already on staff. But remind me what I said. I don't remember what I said.
Criteria, set a standard.
Oh, yes. So like if we did have it, is it in the negotiated agreement that it's like for a certain amount of days, the job would have been posted for a certain amount of days?
24 hours.
But I mean, as far as like being able to give them that stipend and policies, like would it be lined out to where you could, you know, give the stipend but only if a certain amount of criteria were met? Like it hadn't been filled in X amount of days? You know, we have this amount, these number of positions, and it's been open for X amount of days, then that invokes it rather than just leaving it open. You know, because then, I mean, I know that it feels unfair. Because then, I mean, I know that it feels unfair to those folks that already signed on. But I mean, that's kind of just business as it is in any world, you know? So, I just wonder if there's some sort of policy that could be lined out, or if it's been-
We don't have one. I mean, after the fact policy would kind of be hard to do on those people.
Right, well, right. And I just didn't know what it said in the agreement. I don't even remember.
It just says, I pulled it out today.
Okay.
It says up to sixty-five hundred, one time, for one year.
I see. Well, that would be something to consider for the future, then, I think, but to work-
Adding some criteria at negotiations.
Yeah, negotiations with ACT.
Zach, is there anything in there about math versus science versus subject matter?
Versus a coach, no. It's open.
It's just open, any position? Well, certified position?
Correct. Well, we only negotiate with certified. We follow with support, but we wouldn't do that.
But who determines? Is that the superintendent's determination?
It's under compensation, right at the back by the salary schedules. Maybe page twenty-five?
She's got a memory.
She's got it. I just looked at it today. It's only twenty-seven pages long, but I still have to look at it every single day.
I just had that thing memorized, but-
It wasn't under the actual, okay, it's in the extrude.
There you go.
Any amount up to sixty-five hundred may be given as a one-time stipend. As a recruitment incentive, it will not be given to the same individual in subsequent years. That's all it says.
So, there's no subject matter?
No, it's wide open.
It's just total? Anna, is it up to the superintendent, or the principal at the school, or?
Doesn't say, no. The principal can't start deciding.
Oh, my.
These are the things that I think need to be worked out.
Zach, does it say on there that it's sixty-five hundred for?
Any amount up to.
Any amount up to, but does it say?
It's going to be set up to us. I mean, anytime there's any kind of salary changes or whatever, it's with the board approval.
Can you read it again for me?
Any amount up to sixty-five hundred dollars may be given-
Is that what you're asking, Ron?
As a recruitment incentive, and will not be given to the same individual in subsequent years.
Okay, but it doesn't say anything about, there's zero criteria. It doesn't, it's very, very open.
As far as I know, it's never been invoked. I don't remember it ever being invoked. And I asked Dr. Pennington when I was in HR, and he said no, and he had no intentions. But we've never been that dire straits before.
We haven't done it since I've been here.
No.
So, back to Dawn's question. You're saying the board would need to approve it?
I would think so.
I was, I was thinking that the language isn't clear enough to say that it is.
The board approved the negotiated agreement. Of course, we would consult.
Yeah. I think that it just doesn't say clearly enough that you have to give it to the people that have already signed on. But it's very open, and it sort of be up to you, is what I would think. But if the money's there, I don't see why not. If it's that year, you can't give it to-
If I signed yesterday, and then we did.
That's what I'm saying.
But the problem you're into, Anna, what if someone, whoever the someone is, says that athletic trainer position is so critical, we have to fill it?
Well, then, that's, it's up to her discretion at that time to say, no, it's not, because I don't have three athletic trainers.
That goes back to what Dawn's saying. Is it a superintendent approval, or is it a board approval?
Well, this superintendent always consults with the board, so.
I don't know. I'm not proposing one way or the other. I'm just, I'm saying it is very open, open-ended.
As written, because it says may be given, if it's decided not to give it, that's not agreeable.
Right.
If it says shall be given, or will be given, it could be agreed if it's not given to somebody.
Right.
As written, you can just give it or not.
Yeah, we could give it to one person. We could give it to-
Really, it could, I mean, all these years, it could have been given to just anybody. And it hasn't been, because I feel like, I, I mean, I've worked in the district a long time. Yeah, we're a good steward, I feel like, you know? But-
You know, and we may not have to, but I don't know how long we can hang on here with three science positions. Which, June fifteenth tomorrow?
Well, it might be two, if you can, it sounds like Mr. Jackson might need it. And he's a phenomenal teacher, too.
True. We have one, and then we've made a couple of calls today. We've got some options. They don't look too real promising, but we probably spent two hours brainstorming.
Yeah. Just ring the doorbell.
What else?
Talk them in.
Okay. Here, we need two SLPs, but you're considering approving contract companies tonight. So, here's where we are. We currently have one, thirteen openings, one banked elementary. So, of those elementaries, we just don't know where the one banked person's going to go. So, that leaves twelve openings. We're moving back in the interventionists, so that leaves eleven openings. We have two SLPs likely with a contract company. So, we're now down to nine openings, single digits. So, last month, we had twenty-two openings at the board meeting. So, we've been busy. But, okay, so, anybody that graduated in May has already applied. Will be sitting around waiting. So, we've hired fifty-four new certified. Now, these are fifty-four bodies. Some of them are like point four or point five.
Alive?
That's not our FTE. Okay, fifty-four humans, humans, okay. Fifty-four humans. Okay, so it's probably like fifty, fifty-two point six, actually, is what I meant to say. So, it's fifty-four humans that we've hired, but it's probably fifty-two point six FTE. So, our total new positions that we're adding, five point four counselors already hired. Hope we don't have to move one into Lincoln. One dean of students that could go back to science. Two reading teachers at West, which I think were okay. One point one elementary interventionists, just prior to this board meeting, it was two point one. So, total new positions with cares is nine point five. And truthfully, we could add more than that if we could find people. That would help our kids more. We are reinstating the instructional coach at West Middle School. We had that at one point with the reading teacher. Is that her title money? The instructional coach, so that's coming out of West? West title money. We have closed two positions, two elementaries. We've closed a fourth grade at Roosevelt and a third grade at Trout. And we could close the third grade at Garfield and the fourth grade at Union.
Did you move those teachers somewhere? When you said you closed it?
We absorbed. We just put them in some, another place. Oh, yeah, we didn't riff anybody. So, now, that's, our enrollment was down like two-hundred-and-fifty. We're praying it's back up, but that's a double-edged sword. Where are we going to get the teachers, too?
Was that Roosevelt and Trout, was that three to two, or two to one?
Three to two. Three to two. So, we've had fifty-seven certified retirements or resignations. Ten administrators, change of status, resignation, or retirement, adding the dean of students at Poe High. And six of our administrators were internal, and four were external candidates.
Poe High have more students projected than previous years?
Poe High did not go down. Their enrollment stayed constant.
So, the dean of student is not an, it's an added position with the same number of students?
We actually had talked about adding it last year with the board, and you had told us that would be okay, but we, with COVID, we just didn't do it. And so, we're attempting to do it this year.
What's, I mean, the difference, the assistant, there's a lot of assistant principals and such there, too. So, what would the dean of students do that's different than what?
Nothing. They would be like an assistant principal. It's a way to get your foot in the door. They do the work of an assistant principal. Oftentimes, we will hire someone who hasn't passed their certification, or hasn't quite graduated as dean of students. This one has. So, it might be something, if it works out, and he does a great job, but I'm sure he will, that we would then move him to assistant principal pay.
As a science teacher.
So, if he does, if he's told to, I don't know, I'll ask you that later.
Okay, that's it. Any questions? Staffing's not fabulous, but.
Well, I know that the city's doing a really good job of promoting to come to Ponca City to even live or visit. Hopefully, that's going to make a big difference, too. I've seen a lot of ads scrolling on my Instagram. They've been really promoting the heck out of Ponca. Which is good.
Okay.
And we need a motion?
No, no motion.
Well-
For four.
For four, I'm sorry. We talked about considering take action to end the Board of Education COVID-19 safety protocols.
I do have a question on that. So, what happens if we approve number four? What happens from now to July first, when the governor's new edicts go in?
Well, July one, we have to follow the mask mandate.
Right, but what happens in that interim period, that two-week period or three-week period?
Well, right now, we're not following board policy, is the only reason that I say end it, because we're at-
But if we end it, what do we follow?
We pray for the best and hope COVID stays away.
But we don't have any policy, we don't have anything in effect?
No.
Isn't it recommended not requirement?
Well, at the green level in mask, we're not at the green level. We're at yellow, like two-point-oh. I mean, just like fractions away from the green level.
I guess I'm still confused. If we don't have a policy, how can we follow anything?
Well, we didn't have a policy before COVID.
Evidently, well, evidently, we didn't have one all last summer, if it started September fourteenth.
We did not. Well, in fact, when we were in mandated closure, there wasn't a COVID risk level. And I lay odds that we never got past green back when we were in mandatory closure. Just if we would have known. I mean, it was a novel, it wasn't us that made that decision. It was the State Department of Education.
So, with this, taking it off, the bus also has no-
No, that's federal law.
That's federal, that's no matter what, okay.
That Trump's law policy.
Okay.
Okay, what about, last month, we gave superintendent the authority to do things. For instance, whether to wear a mask or not wear a mask. What would happen? Is that null and void now, according to number four here? Or is that still in effect?
That not just for summer school?
For summer school.
That was for summer school. So, I can make that decision.
But not if, but what if we do away? What if we approve number four? Can you still do that? Because we, what we're saying is, we're not going to have any policy, period.
Until July?
Until July one.
One. And then you don't meet again until July tenth?
Right. So, can she still do that?
Based on the last month's board meeting, that's what you approved.
But what we're saying now is, we're not going to have any policy. Gary?
You guys tell the superintendent whether she still has authority or not. You can make a part of your motion.
But if we approve number four without doing something, doesn't that take away her authority to do what we approved last week?
So, maybe we should word it differently.
You need to clarify that in your motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Otherwise, I think she still has authority.
Well, you would think she'd-
Or she doesn't, one way or the other. She either has it, or she doesn't.
Well, that was voted last month for summer school.
Well, you better clarify it.
So, what we need to say is, we consider and take action to end the Board of Education COVID-19 safety protocols, but with?
Well, okay, so if you look at those protocols, we're traveling. Our teachers are traveling to trainings, and that should be restricted in the yellow. We've got summer camps going on. We've got summer team camps going on, so. And we have not seen any increases in COVID. We have not had one positive case. And we're not masking.
I mean, it almost looks to me like we want to eliminate number four and leave in place what we set up last week, last month.
With that, strictly just for summer school?
You have the power to do that. I mean, you can do it any way you want. But as far as what the superintendent is empowered to do, you probably better make that clear.
Okay, so, if we're following the nine-fourteen, we need to restrict visitors. We need to go back to restricting visitors. We need to limit our building and campuses for public events.
I say we take it off the table and just have you be-
That works, as long as I'm not-
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, someone needs a motion.
I just don't want to get us in a bind.
I just don't want to not follow policy.
I understand what you're saying. I, yeah. So, if someone would like to make a motion for us to take this off, and but still have Shelley, the main one, to make the decisions on that?
We have sixteen days left, and hopefully-
I'll make a motion.
Dawn, what do you think?
To what, though?
That we, in the-
Either enter, you table it, motion.
Do what?
Either approve this motion, or you table it.
Technically, you need to move to modify Dawn's motion to read what you're about to do.
Well, then, can, should he do it?
Because this is on the table.
Oh, okay, then he can do it.
What was mine?
What was yours?
I didn't have one.
Well, you didn't move to approve four?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, he was just suggesting.
No, no.
Somebody was going to, and then we had a question.
Judy did. Judy was.
Yeah, just now.
Yes.
Okay, so, I want to, to take action to end the COVID, the Board of Education COVID-19 safety protocols approved on September fourteenth, 2020. And should I say for the next sixteen days? Leave it up to the superintendent to make.
Informed decisions with the K County Health Department.
Informed decisions.
Based off the conversations with stakeholders and-
The risk level?
And the risk level, and what's best practice.
Okay, did you get all that?
No.
Okay. Well, okay, leave the superintendent to make informed decisions. About-
Based on the risk level and in collaboration with the K County Health Department?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Perfect.
So, Judy made a motion?
Do we have a second? Sorry about that.
No. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Zemrcheev?
Aye. Okay, number five is a consent agenda, and it's a motion required for the approval of the consent agenda as printed or as amended. Number one is agenda with commentary, two minutes for May tenth, 2020 regular board meeting. Three is consent and agreements under ten thousand dollars. Four, resolution for Ponca City ISD to join Oklahoma School Insurance Group. Five, activity fund custodians and bond authorization for 2021, 2022. Administrator designated for federal programs for 2021, 2022. Number seven is open transfer for 2021, 2022. And eight is another high school enrollment agreement with the foreign exchange student.
Move approve.
And that'll be our second foreign exchange student. Actually, we were going to have Julia from Italy, and then her host family couldn't take her. And we never did get it rescinded. It would have been rescinded this month, and host family's going to take her, so this will be our second.
But with the same child, is that what you're saying?
Different families. This one's from Norway, and Julia's from Italy, I believe.
Are they both females?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay.
I need someone to second that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrcheev?
Aye. Okay, six, action item. Considering, take action on the following district financial reports.
There's budget amendments, activity fund reports, booster club fundraisers, building bonds, treasures reports. I know that Dawn and Robin were in the meetings.
Yeah, it was a good meeting, because Robin was kind of quiet, so we was able to get some work done. I move approve.
Oh, yeah.
I was worn out after the property...
Yeah, I was worn out.
Can I have a second one, please?
Who made the motion?
Uh, Mr. Dawn.
I'll second. Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay. Number two, consider and take action on the district budget fiscal year 2022. We had a meeting previous to this. It was an awesome meeting that Brenda gave. Great job. It was about our budget. I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the district budget for fiscal year 2022.
I'll second.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay. And number three is consider and take action on a motion approving the renewal of the sublease agreement stated, dated March 1, 2016 between the district and the K County Public Building Authority for the fiscal year June 30, 20, of 2022, as required under provisions of the agreement. And it's for $22,655,000. And this is done every year, correct? I mean, this approved, so...
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
And number four is consider and take action on appointment on board authorization for treasures assistant, for treasurer, assistant treasurer, minutes clerk, deputy minutes clerk, board clerk, deputy board clerk, incumbents clerk, and purchasing agent for fiscal year 2022. And that's Leigh Anne Allen for district incumbents clerk, Kathy Conrad for deputy board clerk, Betty Johnson for board clerk, Jan Mueller for assistant treasurer and minutes clerk, Brenda Story for district treasurer, district purchasing agent, and deputy minutes clerk.
I make a motion to approve.
I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Okay. Number five, consider and take action of the following contracts slash agreements. Um, A is agreement with Andrews Network Enterprise. It's for a filtered net program for three years. And it's a family's own internet filter. If anybody has any questions, Mr. Ryan can do it. It's for $56,763.
Does that, is that pretty effective? I mean, as far as you get a lot of...
Yeah, it's fairly effective. It's one of those ones that you kind of...
Okay.
They kind of use this as a little development area, and so far, I haven't moved in length. It runs really well. Obviously, this is going to get trouble beyond, and they're going to pass it through. But for what we're required to do, just like they're being all the...
Okay. B is agreement with BK Interactive LLC for software subscription for a performance assignment of self-care skills. It's the PAS. It's for kids K through 12, and it measures both students' attitudes towards themselves as learners and their school to help uncover social and emotional barriers. It's $16,200.
I got a question on that one. How can we approve that if the funds for CARES 3 hadn't come in yet?
Oh, that is CARES 3. We can pay it out of CARES 2 and then...
Is that what we're doing? Because it says here it's to be paid with S R 3 funds.
Well, we just don't have the...
But, but, but can we go ahead and get the, get the material? So we have to pay it out of general funds then?
No, this is a July 1.
Contract.
Pay until after July 1. It's a fiscal year 2022.
All these contracts are July 1.
Yeah, they're all July 1 contracts.
So we're assuming we'll get money before we'll pay it?
We know we'll get it. We just have to file the application.
We just didn't want to put an application in for 10 days or 12 days and then have to close it out and start over. So that's why we're not going to get our application completed until July.
Some schools didn't have a cash flow, a healthy fund balance, so they opened it up on, was it the 24th of May? For those that were needing some cash flow to go ahead and...
But they had to open it up and close it out.
Yeah, they, they had to use the money within this fiscal year, and they'll have to close it out.
Is this something new?
This is, this is a screener to help identify our students who might be struggling for response counselors to work with them. There's three things that we're going to work on: anxiety, work in small groups. Now, these response counselors are separate from our school counselors. That, there's appropriate uses and inappropriate uses, and we can't use them for duty or building test coordinator, that kind of thing. It's truly to respond to COVID.
The, is this separate from the SEL software?
Curriculum. This is just a screener, and we're just going to do this for one year to determine the effectiveness. And with our, with our curriculum, we did three years because CARES money's for three years.
Is it district-wide?
Well, it's...
Or K-12, okay. And my other question was, don't we already have some other allocations from CARES 2 and 3 that we've considered? Or is this like the first one?
Well, this, no, we've considered some other ones, but this will be the first one in fiscal year 2022.
Amy, since, oh.
So the money's there either way?
Yeah. Since Amy can answer questions, is this for special ed?
Uh, she's over the counselor, so...
Okay.
It'll be for all, all students.
All students, okay. I was just wondering, because you were answering questions, I guess I think you're the special ed person.
She is, but she's over the counselor's.
Okay, all right.
Okay. C, agreement with Gary Bracken, attorney-at-law for his engagement as attorney for, as the attorney for our district. Um, that's for 2021, 2022 school year. Okay. D is agreement with Chatterbox Speech Therapy for PLLC for speech language pathologist, clinical fellow. Is, I talked to some earlier, and we have this already, we agreed last month for this, but this is a little di, is this just a little different?
The, this one will replace last month, so last month, we approved for up to three SLPs for the district. Um, the, the candidate that they got for us, one of them was a student, one of them is a student, and we must cover all of them, which is a lower cost for us.
Okay.
And the biggest contract, and I think we should be set to cover it.
Okay, okay, thank you. M and E is also agreement with Chatterbox Speech Therapy for an assistant.
The causes.
Those are those two SLP district-wide that we're hoping Chatterbox will...
That's a cost of $76,500. Okay. F is agreement with Delta Steel, its materials to construct the video board base at Salem Stadium. And the cost of that is $11,230.8. Um, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Smith? You're good? Okay. G, agreement with, how do you say this?
Admintum?
Okay, admintum for exact, exact path online math, reading, and language arts instruction. Um, can you, is it just...
We started using this program this year. The state department purchased it.
Okay.
For districts due to COVID, it's a program of students in access at school or at home. We used a lot, especially from your own distance learning, but it's for elementary special education.
Okay. Okay, and that's going to be $13,032. Okay. H, agreement with Galaxy Business Equipment. These are for the copier maintenances. We have four copiers at the copy center and two at the central registration, and they're just for maintenance.
Yeah, this is our annual maintenance agreement.
Okay, and that's $10,000. Okay.
Well, that's an estimated cost. It depends on how many copies we actually make through the copy center, or what our actual cost will be. We just base that on what we pay them.
Okay. The next one is agreement with Entrado, is that correct?
Entrado.
Entrado, okay. Um, it's a service corporation for web hosting. And that's going to be $19,800. Okay. And J is agreement with Linda Johnson for psychoeducational services. And that's going to be 500 per assessment with an annual cost of $37,500. Um, is this new?
We used her often for several years in the past, but last year, when we went from two psychologists, we hadn't been able to fill this.
Okay.
We didn't even get close to the 37,5 either last year.
Okay.
It just depends on our special needs that the assessments will need.
Okay. And the next one is agreement with Level Data for Zone Integration Service. And it's to power school, active directory, Google, and WinEngage, and NutraKids all together. And is that correct, Mr. Ryan? It just kind of works together? That's going to be $13,962.70.
This is a new thing? Or something you do every year?
This is something I do every year. Power School, they create their Johnson, all these places.
Always wondered how you did that.
Magic.
I always wondered. I was like, wow, we're saying use this in higher ed.
Okay. L, ratification agreement with NexThevia to provide phone services. It's for local long-distance phone services and $21,600. And M, agreement with Oklahoma School Assessor Group, OSAG, for workers' compensation insurance. And then N is agreement with Oklahoma School Insurance Group, OSIG, for commercial insurance. And then agreement with PAS, agreement with PAS Program LLC for social and emotional learning.
That's the elementary curriculum for SEL.
Okay. So K through fifth grade, is that...
Okay, through five.
Five, okay. Okay. Agreement with Pinnacle Business System, and this is for firewall. Um, the cost is $18,352.95. And then another agreement with Pinnacle Business System for the VMware software. And this is for, to virtualize our servers and save some money. Okay. R is agreement with Pioneer Technology Center for the dropout recovery program, SHARE. And Ponca City School agrees to pay Pioneer Technology Center 75% of student-grade wait funding for a secondary student received from the State Department of Education. So this is just to help us with our...
We actually get 25% of this state aid, and they're working with the students, so, because they're our, they're our student.
Okay. Okay, and then we have an agreement with Power School. It's a software with Power School, and it's $45,975.20 for 2021, 2022 school year. And we love Power School. Boy, we get one of those, and we shoot a text to the kids. Agreement with Reading Plus for a site license subscription over for West Middle School. And that's a three-year license for Reading Plus. Okay. Agreement with Stanley Systems for the copy maintenance agreement. Okay, so, help me out on that. This one is also for copy machines, and the other one that we did is...
The one with, now, we see there's a large machine, a copy center.
Okay.
And Stanley has a contract for our copy machines in our school.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. And V is agreement with Superior Vision Consultant for Braille Certified Visual Impairment Service, and that cost is $22,750, 650 per session, up to 35 sessions. Okay. And agreement with TK Elevator Corporation, and that's to help maintenance our 12 elevators. And I did not realize we had 12 elevators in our district. Okay. Agreement with Trail Fair for Chromebooks for West Middle School, and that is $191,000 and 100, wait.
What are we doing with the ones, I assume these are the refreshed, Ryan? What are we doing with the ones coming back?
Ones coming back, we'll either, you know, even, we'll circulate them back into the small bit of virtual school that we may have. Otherwise, we're going to surplus them, and we'll...
But of the 5, 600, the majority of them are still working. Obviously, they're working, or they wouldn't be working at the end of the school year.
They're, they're working, they're just out of warranty. And in the deployment where they're at right now, with a lot of keywords that have missing key, screen broken, so the cost to move those out, the one that's covered with a maximum damage protection warranty, I'm going to make use of either off replacements or just surplus.
So have these been in place for four years?
Yes.
Okay.
And we used a lot of our surplus last year to go one-to-one, K through 12. So, you know, we'll keep the better ones just in case.
Well, I would think out of the 600, the majority are still going to be good.
Well, and that's one of the things we tried to, before we finished up the year, we got as many of them repaired into warranty. At the point of warranty right now. So there's, most of them should be viable. Back out of circulation. If you break it, it's out of, it replaces it without an extra one.
Is four years still the right length for refresh, or do we need to extend it?
Four years is about the best that I can get a warranty for currently. Most places will do three years with accidental damage. They give us four years, they'll cover pretty much. I have never policy, so if I have more than one screen broken on a particular device, it usually don't give us any problems. They're looking like it starts a little slow, but they always give us a pair of.
Okay.
Okay, are you good? Mr. Robin? Okay, agreement with Train for the HVAC system at the Wildcat Academy, which will cost us $12,550. And Z is agreement with Wilson Dotson and Associates PLLC to provide an annual audit for financial affairs and transactions of all funds and activities in the district. Okay, that's $14,500. And then we have another one, agreement with Winro and Tally Architects, and it's a service they provide to us. And the fee is, it varies on the construction cost. Is that correct? Okay.
Make a move, approve, approve A through AA.
Sorry, I have one more question on O.
O, hold on.
Is that SEL, is that one for the one for the kids or the one for the staff?
That is the one for the students, pre-K through fifth grade.
And then it doesn't say where it's, that's going to come out of the special education budget? It's S R also.
It's part of our 20%.
Okay.
A question I have. I assume most of this stuff, particularly the new software, I assume that was discussed in the curriculum committee, and they don't have a problem with any of it?
We just had Judy.
It was me.
Okay.
No, I didn't have a problem with any of it.
Okay, go ahead. Can I need someone to second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. Yeah, Dawn did.
Roll call. Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we have consider and take action to accept bid award contract for Evans and Associate Construction. They're working at Washington and Pre-K Playground. Is that something you were talking about with the COVID?
That was modifying facilities to spread out our playground, and it needs a resurface.
So there's two projects. There's playground, and there's, there's the parking lot. They both need to be done, but we have to split it, because one can be answer money and the other one cannot.
Ah, I hate the parking lot.
We need it all at one time, so it just makes sense.
It's bad. It is a bad parking lot, yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve six.
Second.
I'm just curious, how many bids did you get on this?
So the only asphalt place in town.
So why did you decide to go with asphalt?
Well, because it's currently asphalt, and we can, we can rejuvenate that a lot easier than we can concrete.
But it won't be as, it won't last as long.
That's correct.
And it'll be, it would be more, but it would last longer.
That could be true. It would cost more to do the concrete, and this would be easier to do. Reuse the existing asphalt to help with that compaction, so it just makes sense.
Ready for roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Mrs. Trupe?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Okay, seven is consider and take action to approve the contract for celebrating school property located on Nine Mile Road. Now, the sale price was $75,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Trupe?
Okay. And number eight, consider and take action to approve the contract for sales of the Finley District Center property located on South T Street. And it went for $62,000.
I have a question. I know the Levitas were working on this. What happened? Because I know they didn't get who.
They backed out at the recommendation of their lawyer, Will Oldfield, who said $5,500 was outrageous.
$5,500, it's not $5,500.
That was what they wanted to give.
That's what they wanted to give, okay.
We got 62, but...
My motion to approve.
I said $5,500, not $55,000.
I know, I heard you.
I second.
I just know that they worked on that a long time. I didn't know about that. All of a sudden, somebody else is buying it for...
Well, their lawyer died, and then they hired Will Oldfield, who said, "This is outrageous. Don't do it."
Okay, let's do roll call.
I'm sorry, they lost that.
Roll call.
Oh, I, yes.
Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Roland.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemerschi.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Okay, number nine, consider and take action on approval of science and mathematic courses for cr, uh, for credit taking at Pioneer Technology Center. And this is students may receive credit with board approval for, for these classes.
Right, we, I move to approve out of nine.
Okay, I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Roll call. Mrs. Zemerschi.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Roland.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Okay. Number ten is consider and take action on a change order number one for Child Nutrition Renovation Program, or Project. They're having ceiling problems and roof problems and it's the cost of two thousand, eight hundred and fifty, seventy-eight. Someone motion or any questions?
Motion to approve.
Oh, oh, I guess I do have a question. Where is this located now?
Social Security Building next to-
West. Unemployment office.
Oh, unemployment, sorry.
Okay.
I knew it changed. I just couldn't remember where it was.
Yeah, it should be OES.
And can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Judy.
Roll call. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Roland.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemerschi.
Aye.
Okay. Number eleven, motion and vote to convey an executive session for the following purpose: to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the action detail personnel report. Can I get a motion?
No, you need to talk about the other ones. Discussing, you need to read the other ones too, please.
Oh, read twelve and-
Gotta read the, to discuss, no shit.
Just read the whole paragraph.
Okay, okay. It changes on me all the time. Well, in my head.
I know.
To neg, to negotiations, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of renewal, real property. Hold on, I don't have all my glasses. Okay, and discuss confidential conversations with board attorney, uh, concerning pending claims and litigations. Good?
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay.
I have a second.
Second by Roland. Roll call. Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mrs. Zemerschi.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Roland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Okay, we're in.
Here we're going.
Okay, let's return to open session. I need a second.
Six thirteen.
Okay, we've shadowed by board president that minutes of executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk and will remain confidential. Okay, consider and take action recommendation for terminate, termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel.
Make a motion to approve fourteen.
Second.